Projector has announced.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Neil. Great man, head's even shnier. Neil, did you turn the heat off by chance? Can you lower it a bit so it kicks on if it gets colder? When it kicks on, it's wonderful. It's loud, but it's definitely wonderful. Thank you Neil for all the help. Okay, we're starting a few minutes late. My apologies. It is 6:04 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with, as soon as I can get the screen to change, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And before you say, I should have mentioned this, please let's take a moment to remember those who have gone before us.
Thank you very much.
Okay, roll call vote please. Presence? Great, thank you. Just before I go through the announcements on the agenda, this is our first large in-person meeting where we're also doing this via Zoom. I'll be trying to manage the technology side of it as best as I can, but we're using this camera right here. For those of you who are at home, thank you. Please meet your microphone unless you'd like to speak up. You can certainly communicate by speaking up or by shooting a text message, especially when we get to the people-to-be-heard section. So, thank you. First announcement, and I wanted to show this right off the bat, state program provides financial assistance for low-income homeowners having trouble paying water and sewer bills due to economic hard, economic impact of the pandemic. This is a program that's made possible through the New York State Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance to help with paying water and sewer bills. Board, we actually have on the agenda this, this item. So when we get to that point, I can show you, and I'll just throw it up on the board for us to see here. This is going to be the vendor agreement, which would allow us to basically offer this program. Is there anything else you want to add to that, Andy?
Not right now, when we get to the agenda item.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I do want to answer.
Yes. Let's see here. Upcoming village election reminders, petitions for the upcoming election need to be in by Thursday, February 3rd, 3:30 PM. Because that's close of business day for us at the office. We have three two-year trustee seats and a single one-year trustee seat available in the next election, as well as a village justice position that would be a four-year term. All right. I wanted to start with appointments for a minute, and I'm just basically going to state what I have on the agenda. So if anybody has some, they can follow along. Beginning right now at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 11th, I will be appointing, I'm going to appoint, I guess I'm appointing, I'll put in the present tense, Officer Paul Alexonis as the new officer in charge for the Village of Hudson Falls Police Department. Officer Alexonis has been with the police department since, is it 95? Thought I got that right. And has been OIC many times when the chief has been on vacation. He's in a position to work several shifts, and I am looking forward to having him as the officer in charge. As you guys know, Officer Bernie Davic was appointed initially officer in charge on December 16th, 2021. He will become the second in command in the command structure. Officer Davic has done a tremendous job stepping in during a very tricky time of transition. We are very grateful for your dedication and will insist take on the responsibility that you took on and that you are now going to be taking on, on Paul. So thank you guys very much. And these appointments, in my mind, will remain in place during the suspension of Chief Ash, no matter how long that takes. I've gotten a lot of comments from residents who are concerned about making sure the police department stays in this stable. I've had a lot of officers step up and cover extra shifts, shifts as needed. Not just this, but we've had some COVID situations as well. So it's been a very tricky time. So Officer Davic, thank you for everything you have done. And Officer Alexonis, now officially officer in charge, thank you very much for taking this on. All right, I have a few updates I want to go through. Trustees, the first one, we've had some serious copy machine issues. Our main one died a couple of months back. And we had gotten, I had found a free replacement on Facebook Marketplace that Neil was gracious enough to pick up, and thank God we did. Because when that one died, we switched to this one, which has been okay-ish. But now we're having problems where, how many times a day do you have to shake the phone? Two, yeah, it's pretty urgent. We have a smaller machine that is mainly used for Judy when she's doing envelope printing. But it's been our backup machine. I've been having problems making copies on that because when it runs it across the glass, it doesn't do it evenly. So some lines look larger and some lines it's smaller and it's kind of comical. So we do have on the agenda tonight some purchase, mainly purchase options, because we talked there purchasing and leasing. And we decided that purchasing would make more sense. And when we get to that part of the meeting, I have those quotes and items to put up on the screen. Number two, Huesick River Greenway North Trailhead, this is another grant that's been going on. A while back, we put out a bid, which we heard back from lots of local contractors. That was an exceedingly large bid package. It was like a couple hundred pages of stuff. So nobody sent in the bids. So what we're going to be doing later is looking for permission again to put out a bid. And it would be on the schedule of the bids being backed by February 1st, so that they can be reviewed prior to the February 8th meeting, which would give BNL a chance to look over things, give the recommendations.
No, no.
Just as a reminder, we're hearing some folks from home. If you can meet your microphone, that's, that's great. Until we get to that, those portions, thanks. All right, mayor update number three, we have made some progress on the Woods Brook demolition. And again, Mark has been doing an exceedingly huge amount over the past month, as well as the village office, as well as Andy. So as well as Neil and DPW guys. So thank you. I don't know if you can see this, but this is, let me move this out of the way for just a moment for people here. This is now the side of 114 Church Street, because the smaller building, 100 to 108 Church Street, is down. It was cosmetically connected, not structurally connected to the building. That's down. And I think, did they finish the filling process? Okay. Okay. So that's, that's a big step forward. We now have 115 Main Street down, 7 Hall Street down. Three is, I think the structure's down, but they didn't seem to work. Okay. And we got the waiver from DOL to continue as a controlled demolition. The next ones on the schedule are 5 Paul Street and 27 Elmo Street. So that's kind of the near future on that. I will say that, you know, we're still many steps away from what's going to happen to this, to these properties. Once we acquire them, we do have additional funding from the state. And the state has a contractor who's already started to meet with you guys on what's next, what are the possibilities for here? This is a spot that I've said before, and I'm going to continue to say would be a great spot for a little parking lot. Right near a couple important locations. It'd be just another nice spot on this side of the village to have a little bit of extra parking. I think parking is something we could do with that land. I know they're, they're very specific on things we can and can't do. But in my mind, just as a planting a seed, but we're still a long time away from making that decision. And that's going to be a decision being by many, many folks. Let's see here. As we continue to work on getting internet and phone service at the water treatment plants, we originally had an agreement with Spectrum to do an install at the water treatment plant, but there needed to be some modifications to the plan. A static IP address had to be added in the phone line, so they needed us to sign the agreement again. I have that agreement ready to go. I just need permission from the board to sign that. So that's also on the agenda, and we can talk about that when that comes up. And finally, we have the carbon, another carbon changeout coming for the GAC filter, and that is scheduled to start on January 18th, which is a Tuesday. And that's important because it's like a two-day process for changeout and another couple, two days. So if it goes any longer than that, then it means our guys have worked on the weekend and we're just doing our absolute best to avoid that. Trustees, any questions? Okay, great. Okay, we are the people-to-be-heard section. When called upon, please start with your full name and street address. Please share or speak to what you would like to discuss to. The mayor will see how many are here in person and virtually who would like to speak, and then I'll set a time limit to speak. So it's a manageable time. And just as a reminder, as I've already mentioned before, this is on Zoom, it's being recorded. We their audio or audio and video record all of our meetings, and they'll eventually put them up on YouTube. So you have that kind of idea of how many people either at home, let me put this on my screen so I can see things. I see Marion at home. Anybody else virtually will want to speak up on anything? And then in person, how many would like to speak? Okay. What's that? Um, we don't have anything definitive to act on, but if you want to share any concerns or thoughts on parking, that's totally fine. Um, we don't have it on the agenda tonight, something we're looking to review prior to the February meeting. But if you want to speak to that with your concerns, that's totally fine. Okay. So no need to speak? Okay. In that case, I'll set the limit at five minutes is fine. And I guess we'll go in person first. So Marion, if you could meet for just a moment, you wanted to go, take it away?
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Justin, and I have two talks on the Village of 2005.
Mayor, that is just after here, 2004. I work over seven, seven matters and sheets, and I owe my dedicated, my decorated law court for this charity village for dumps are not approved. Today's meeting on behalf of majority of police officers that are employed in this village and not as the son of the chief. The current mayor and two current police officers have made an accusation regarding the chief, and the facts of the accusations will show that there is no barrier of protection. We're going to know the chief to know his parents, passion, and fair judgment. One who takes great pride in his department and ability. I'm sure several people in this room personally know his cell phone owner, and he called in any hour of any pandemic at any time. In fact, majority of people that would deal with the cops know that they rely on that chief. Which falls a small, tight-knit community, and this type of police should be considered a core of every small community. And it ensures that no matter what your position, and to the highest level, that you should be accessible to everyone. The concern I have, correct, for Mayor Allen, is several of his concerns or issues that he's aware of and has yet to deal with him, and I feel the board can public it to you. The police department needs camera systems that are used to documenting interviews with suspects, victims, informants, and documentation evidence. Any non-law enforcement access to these cameras violates policy and greatly jeopardizes the continuity of evidence, as well as violation of certain privacy that victims and suspects both have a right. This inadvertently affects criminal cases, and hopefully the village will either. I have handed you all a copy of the letter dated December 6th, 2018, which is addressed to Mayor Biden. Two days, the letter has not addressed the issue, and still continues to act as a part of care. And our forensic attorney has also issued a letter to the American Department. Mayor Allen should be able to learn of issues, also John Hudson, and in regards to the past, that greatly jeopardize the integrity of this department. The mayor accepted sole responsibility for dealing with the issue, and has yet to done anything that this has dominated. I have a hash copy of the letter in regards to John Hudson, and the mayor also has one basic. The Giglio letter on file is on file with the GAC office. In any case that arrives at your door, the prosecutor, the letter has to be turned over to the defense. In some instance, John Hudson was found to lie in an approval and resigned instead of being fired. Officer Hudson also is present in the county depression squad, and given subject of multiple complaints to you, Mr. Mayor, of conduct account of depression squad business while being paid by the village of Hudson Falls Police Department, as well as sleeping in the rescue squad while working police. Recently, Officer Hudson has trained a new officer in the village, which we are currently dealing with for excitement.
Justin, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I will, I will give you your time back. You said you're an officer of the police department here in the village. Is it fair and appropriate to distribute those letters?
Yes, and I will have to do it. Officer Hudson stood upon himself to vacate the village and respond to the bar and fire officer. In no time, Officer Hudson requested, and per policy, to respond outside the village, even though predicted by supervisor or requested by national one. The justification made by Bernie Davic is that the officer, the new officer had never seen a bar and fire before. The next time he's shooting our homicide scene will be in the city of Troy, should the village be needing to do their extension to see a homicide scene for train purposes? May I put behind the new investigation of that of providing further documentation photos to people? I think this seat has tax paying village president need police, and they're not being it because they're not there. The appointment of Bernie Davic raises great concern. I think, Mayor, you've done a great job with stepping up and making Paul Allen Jonas, the new acting officer in charge, a well-standing member of this community. I stand by him, and I work side by side with him daily.
Justin, I'm sorry, I'm
Bernie Davic has been in charge of this local community since I began my career.
Justin Ash, I am asking you to stop for a moment, because I am not going to stand. You have given me a letter before. I appreciate that. I am not, I
My five minutes is not on there.
I am not, I'm asking you not, excuse me, I'm asking not to disparage another police officer locally. I am the chief executive officer. I am saying right now, that your time is up. I have received your letter, and if you do not stop, I would be asking you all to leave. Justin, I'm asking you to stop. If you do not stop, I would be asking officer to escort him out. You are out of order for the meetings. I am not going to have you
Is very filling open shift. Are you wearing through 90 open shift?
Officer Alexonis, I'm sorry, I would not do this, but I've been asking
They work for a family today. Matter of fact, I'm located in the police department in this area. They do it because they love this village.
I will let them talk, and I'm not going to allow them to do it for the right reason. You disparage current officers.
Your actions as mayor greatly affect the morale and well-being of each of these officers. You failed to lead and failed your job, which you took it over to do.
You're out of
You have opened the village up to liability and failed the people of this great village. In regards to my concern, I leave you with important, President Roosevelt. In any moment of decision, the best thing to do is the right thing. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing to do is nothing. Mayor, do the right thing and step down. Thank you for your time. You guys need anything else, I have to go over here. I'm sorry. I'm up here all the time, up in our practice and destination without time. Thank you.
If you
Shut that off. I'm sorry, but I have to say again.
Were you not caught up on time?
I have never, I have never been where I was charged anywhere in the entire area. That's, you can check the paper. You may follow up and I'll be impressed with my career regards to your company. Thank you very much.
I'm going to speak simply for people who want to hear a few comments. In no way will I be publicly commenting on personnel matters. I would simply ask that due diligence be done. Not to just play off of viral videos, but to actually take a couple moments to figure out what is going on, what is being spoken to, what is being accused, and what is not. I do have some problems with an officer who says that he works here. Coming here to disparage other officers in the public community. It'll pull down, okay. I have no problem with anyone coming and sharing opinions, popular or unpopular, that I totally agree with or that I totally don't. That has always been how I run things. That is always how I run things. Even if that makes me the most or least popular person, that's not what I'm doing. Suffice to say, I will be reviewing the letters as I think of all of them. And I will speak to the board as needed, with any concerns they have. But personnel matters cannot be discussed publicly. And apart from that, I don't have anything else to say. Very disappointing that the first person is the house from the meeting. This is what it is. All right. Hi Marion.
Hello, how are you?
I'm all good.
First, we'd like to say thank you for the Zoom. We feel a lot safer with it, with our numbers going up here in the village and Rensselaer County. So thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, you are welcome.
Um, and then I am here to bring up, has your, have you started your budget process?
Not much, no. Started discussions, but nothing formally yet.
All right, again, a reminder about brush removal being done in our village. I know I had brought that up at a meeting, because it does become a hardship for people that do not have trucks and things like that.
If they can become a line item.
If they can become a line item as part of the responsibility of the road crew.
Marion, can you say the last thing one more time about brush?
Um, we had talked, I believe it was in October, we had come down and I brought you pictures, a brush removal that we felt should be a line item in your budget now. Due to the hardship it is for people to get it to the dump or down to the waterworks. And I wanted that considered in the budget.
Got it. Thank you, Marion. Anything else?
And then Harold also wanted to know what was the progress on the clearing of sidewalk, clearing of snow on sidewalks in the winter.
In terms of law and policy, we have nothing to, hold on a minute, my mic didn't hear me.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, I can.
All right. We have nothing new in terms of law or policy. Just because we ran into so many legal snafus and concerns when we were trying to put together something to codify into law. So at this point, we're still doing what we've been doing. As we look to budget, we've had discussions about possibly getting more equipment, possibly more staffing, and that's all going to factor into budget discussions.
Okay, well, even if we get an emergency brush removal when storms happen, that would be a beginning step.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Even if we could get something in the budget for when the storms happen and there's damage, if brush could be removed, that would be a beginning step for the village.
Got it. Is that it?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, in that case, we will continue on. Reports, trustees, you have all copied their parts? I of course left my hard copy at home. I just have my digital copy. Can I have a hard copy? Anything you guys want to note on the treasurer's report? I think we do have village treasurer on. Hi, village treasurer Denise.
Hi there.
Anything you want to highlight or trustees, anything you want to ask Denise?
Hey there. Thank you guys for all of your nice and kind words and thoughts and whatnot these past few weeks. I appreciate it, and hopefully things will be back on track soon for me.
I don't know if you can hear, but tons of great support and love for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Unless you guys want to have a question, I'm looking for a motion to approve the treasurer's reports. All right, that was Dev and Bobby D. All in favor? Opposed or abstentions? All right, carries. Police reports.
Last one minute, the open court in final, 129 were handled by Hoover Falls. Unfortunately, due to staffing shortage, we had three handled by the sheriff's department and two handled by the state police. That was due to some officers being out on medical leaves and went throughout on military leave. We ended up with some open shifts. Overall, not too bad. For the month, we had two abandoned vehicle complaints, four animal complaints, six fire complaints, 36 EMS calls, one burglar alarm, court details, coastal interference of one, debris in the roadway, 13 disturbance calls, six domestic, one drug complaint, one dumping complaint, one execution of a drug warrant, a flight, three fraud calls, one harassment, one investigation, two arsonists, one lockout, one parking complaint, one property damage accident, three property disputes, nine public assists, two suspicious vehicles, three sex offenders that re-registered, one trespass complaint, five welfare checks, and two non-alcoholic calls. Also, in the same time period, the village patrol did assist outside the village 13 times in the last month. With the sheriff's department, state police, there was a fire call, three EMS calls, five burglar alarms, two investigations of stolen vehicle, a property damage accident, and a property check. That was total 142 responses for the village patrol. And just for a comparison, since I had a chance to take a look at the numbers in the town for the same period, there was only 49 calls. 28 were handled by the sheriff's department and 21 by the state police. To give you an idea, the call volume difference between the village and the town. On top of the calls, I talked to the DUI coordinator for the county, so the new South DUI contractor has been signed. In regards to that, there's also a letter of liability that you guys are familiar with every year. And he said they'll be paying half claims. I'm not sure what claims we have in, but he said there are some half claims that haven't been paid. They're going to be taking care of that. If anybody's been in the police station, you've seen some changes in there. There's a movement going around. Some of the silent cabinets had to be changed, and some of the rooms had to be changed in anticipation of the bathroom reconstruction that's going to happen. We're going to lose some space out there. We have to move some things around. 504 is going to the Ford garage for warranty work, and there's an oil leak on it. Possibly it's a filter-related thing. Apparently it's come loose a couple of times. And it was leaking again, so it's going down. Officer Warner is going to graduate in the police academy January 25th. And got a few more shifts left to do for his, for his ride along time. He's coming along good. Officer Murphy is another new guy. He's worked Saturday with Silvernell, and he's doing pretty good. Got his feet, jumped right in. We do have Officer Ryan Ash and Mark around on military service, and they're gone for the month doing training. So I just want to thank them for their time and the service to the country. They said they will be back next month, be back on the schedule. And Officer Swanson and Schmitty are both here tonight. They did a 24-hour course for Russellizer certification. Last week. For the year, and just for a comparison, the calls for the year 2018 were 1,317 calls, 2,019 are 1,602. 2,025 is 1,488, and unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to get this year's numbers because the month is half last month as well. The arrests are more telling though. If you look at 2,018, 164 arrests. 2,019, there's 153 arrests. Two thousand and nineteen, there's one hundred and fifty-three arrests. With the installation of ball reform, two thousand and twenty showed eighty-nine arrests, and two thousand and twenty-one was seventy-three. The current vehicle mileage right now is five zero two. The new vehicle is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two miles. In the meantime, the other three vehicles are about the same. Five zero four is at sixty-six thousand four hundred and six. Five zero three is at eighty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-four, and five zero five is at seventy-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. So, nothing to do right now with that, but it's obviously going to be a concern. In the next year, we're going to have three vehicles the same mileage. They're going to reach their end of life. Any questions?
Thank you for taking over.
Sure.
So, so that, that was interesting, and I know we spoke about this.
Yeah.
And we, a few things have happened over the past month on Facebook and Renee, I see that we talked about this here. The one is specific to a particular dog in a particular location. And, what do you mean, southern?
We looked up that area, and there's been no complaints on the one that's on Facebook recently with the dog. It's gotten no complaints on it. I'm not sure if Nancy did, but she's usually pretty good at following up. I'm sure she knows where the owners are and has made phone calls. But there's been no complaints to the police partner for the village officially.
There was a case that went to court, but I don't know if that was in the village.
It was in the village. That was last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was in regards to the same thing, but.
But the takeaway that we need to tell people is if you, if they have an issue or complaint, they should call the police so that it gets recorded as an incident because that gives us the paperwork and, you know, oh, this is the third time this dog has been called on. The fourth time. And that helps us, and that also in turn helps the dog and the court.
Yep.
Yes.
I think this is the question that's not on me.
Sure.
That's the way it gets really bold. I don't, I don't know what one of us wants. We just thought, but I worry about if people have to call and then initially smell like, and wonder if you, if you guys could, or if they're actually not used to it.
Yeah, U D House does do that, and they, you know, there are available twenty-four hours for us. That's something that keeps us set up. So that's, that's been a good program so far, and it's worked out well for the families that have used it. Haka also does some things for people that need to go someplace tonight if there's no heat. But I'm not sure how active Haka is anymore. Right, right. That they had in the past. So I'm sure they would again. I don't, we haven't had that issue yet this year. So I don't know how, you know, the priest isn't here full-time anymore, so it's, you know, context is different. But I'm sure that the deep ends of the church are, you know, either way, we'd be able to go through Haka and find something if that comes up.
Anything else? All right, the promotion to group, please, officer. Thank you. Do you have a second? All right, I'm the, and Dev, all in favor? I oppose the sentence. Great. Carries. Moving on to the court of course, before.
You guys have my information in the reports. I have any questions. I covered so much more. Your project. I'm always able to deal with some of them. I don't know how busy I am. So those are the things, you know, going on. I do know, I'm very passionate about that. Like I say, it's a first time here that this is a family inspection, a super, and a lot of the things that we do. Are there four cases? Yes, there are four cases. Yes. Over newer cases, we're not relying to, you know, I have a process. I start off with a letter, reminding them that I have questions. And I have no questions, some people, I actually don't, three years. I'm a three-year coach. So I send a letter, and I send a thirty days, a six violation. Thirty days, and the second comes a violation. No thirty days. And in the case of a court, we all mentioned that process, and as you remember, we shop in the time. So once we're in the process of time, so, so. Trying to feel we're mad at, when we go to court, everybody, the judge will. He will work with us to motivate people to get the inspections done. Well, if I could add, we have impressed upon the court, the court authority under our local laws that the imposition of monetary penalties, which is the point of being in court on a hearing ticket. Court of its own position, our court paragons, we have close compliance, but if we are in court, we've impressed upon the court, the court will leave the ground, look, wash it, both. Then I'm asked, which, lots of work out for the month, two to the month, and then the court is ready to allow to continue for another couple of months, and then the ground seems to be. Oh yeah, I think, I think that's a big thing sometimes. But usually if you can tell them, you know, which is all I can do the whole time, I'm trying to get a diagnosis, just trying to find. Now, what is it, the report? Yeah, I guess I guess I'm a little bit disappointed now, partly, only in fact that an entity doing a great task, trying to point out, we have a structure set up for that. And when we get to that point, as I just explained to you, whatever gone to the pot, you know, I'm this bill, we have the authority as far as I'm concerned. Or so that. Or birds, I don't want, I can say the bird is out, there are some. Catch a bow. No. No, because I can't even get to the water.
Any other questions? If you need assistance with that, please, be up to me. I know a lot of things are going on, but I know that's also been there.
Yeah, I'm exactly, yeah. You don't get too beautiful in my talk.
That's all right. That's all right. I'm fine.
And anytime you guys have a question or something, I have a boss who just me this morning, and I have a question.
Okay. Great. And looking for a motion to chief group, thank you. Need a second? Thank you, guys, for those. All in favor? Proving, opposed, or赞成? Vote enforcement, of course. Thank you. Move on to court deputy court report. Anything you want to highlight?
This basically, December deals went out, they were coming in, they practiced containment. They make a lot of documents to the CFOA couple, and the latter, the C W M, the twenty-fourth, till the twenty fifteen, till we go to the property tax, where it's not.
Standing. And I actually forgot to mention, I'll, I'll finish this up and mention it. Anything you guys want to mention, or ask help?
Post a teaser.
We definitely post a teaser in, but we're working it out.
Any other questions? Looking for motion to approve the court deputy court report?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Bobby and Bob. All fair?
All right.
All right, pose your attention. All right, carries. Highway department reports. Bobby, anything you want to? Anyone else? Neil, anything you want to, well?
Um, but you could, yeah, for all aspects. The one thing, the dog park, Devin, I met the staff, the resolution of the, quickly, the rules and regulations, and so, and that's the end tomorrow, and I don't think we're finding some.
I've been like, I can get that, I'm going to go.
And Dev, I did get that, so if you want me to throw that up on the screen at some point, I can do that. Yep, I'm just going to, in the folder right now. Okay. Do you want to shoot that right now? Just one second. When you break this show up in the folder there. I don't know if people at home will see this, but I'm going to throw it up here. And I'm going to zoom in. Find zoom on this. There we go. Do you guys read that or you want a little? One closer? Nope, wrong way. Apparently need to zoom. What's that?
Yeah, can you read that?
I was looking, I ended up having a conversation with a friend about another dog park, and I saw that, she said there's a really good one in the Saratoga area, and if you go to the website, they have this beautiful sign that looks very similar in fact to this. Beautiful. I'd love to figure out where that sign was made.
Well, they said it had two signs. One was very flat, and the other one was, the other one was like, thank you, and it was way more expensive.
Well, that's a part of the.
Yeah, it's like, you know, it's, we call some, it's hard, and it's hard, and it's.
All right, well, this is, this is good progress, and I'm assuming we'll, we'll have some more discussions on it, and if you need. For anything to handle that.
Well, we'd like to give, we'd like to use this, we have a thing with assignment, like me and, that's just, you can create something which this is making on, in a separate time, so we don't have to wait for the assignment to be done.
Okay, it's going to be a sign. And it should be officially approved policy on this, in order to sign up, or just put the sign up and go.
But now the board should approve the regulation, the dog park, and then give it a temporary sign.
Okay. Do you want to review this, or do you want, we can wait until we get to the, the court reports. But if that's the case, if you get that from, I can email this feedback now, so you can have it, and you do what you say.
Pretty much what we talked about last time.
Okay, okay.
One thing I do want to think from all.
All right. Great. So we were doing highway report. Have we approved that? Okay, any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Neil. Looking for motion to do to the highway report? Thank you. Thank you. All, all in favor? Opposed or赞成? Carries, great. Thank you. Sue report. Anything you guys want to highlight or ask about? I know, planning to do a lot of the normal stuff we do this season, that was just a place to help get the snow, and they got to play with the new backdrop. And it's a good time, I think, for people who get excited about playing with the backdrop. Love it, love it. In fact, something I was thinking about, I would love to, I'd love you guys to keep a list of all the times you end up using that. So I, I think it would be good to see how often we use that, because we'll clue a lot of us into how often you got to work together with our pockets and use that sort of thing. And then speak to if there were any issues in the future. Well, here's the need, we can show you right here, and go on the paper. So just throwing that out there. Any other questions on your department report? Not looking for motion to group? And Dev? And do you have any questions? All in favor? All right, all opposed or赞成? Carries. Water reports. I know Craig is normally how like, I think, he is a few miles away from us right now. What's that? I'm sure he is. The couple of things I would point out is, this is the water meter really enforced with bills. We had more issues with the boiler that is in the gas portion of the water treatment plant. And it's been a lot of the same problems, so that's kind of continuing to be sticking point. I think I told you about that, but it's kind of one of those things that we just have sitting up that we're trying to get that taken care of, so. Otherwise, that's it. Unless you guys have questions, I'll take the motion to chief of water. Thank you, Bobby. All fair? All right, opposed or赞成? No? All right, carries, great. Thank you. Ms., my apologies on this, because all we have for tonight is the December fourteenth regular meetings. I did not get the sixteenth or thirtieth special meeting minutes out for a certain brief, but I've gotten that reviewed. So we will postpone those to the next meeting. My apologies. Any questions or comments on the December fourteenth minutes? Thank you. All right, further discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Opposed or赞成? All right. Units approved. Trustee committee reports. We'll start at the end, Kevin, and work our way down. Except lots of good advertising to teach you things, that's it. Thank you. Loving it. All right, Bobby, that's it.
Let's see, I have a little discussion here. Thank you, Tom. We are the one that we, we have a lot of time to decide, so we really got to take our time. We are really trying to do a good problem. So we can't. And we get a second round, and it's spring. Right, Denise?
Denise, can you hear any of that? Anywhere else?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I can.
My email as well. The whole most I do is make proposals, ideas, anything we could start to look at, approve. The topics are, and what.
Sorry, Denise, we're just trying to get verification on the second payment, but Andy confirmed it's the spring.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm having a hard time hearing everybody else.
Yeah, that's the microphone. I have to switch to the larger microphone.
Which is worse quality. Can you hear things now?
Yeah, it's better. Yeah.
Okay, I'll stick with this mic then. Basically, just ARPA funds, taking our time, moving, making sure we do it right, but getting ideas in so we can continue moving and notice, notice things out to people as here's what our plans are, want to hear from you, and so on and so forth.
You know, we definitely need some new equipment in the office, the postage machine, the copier, probably updated computers that would definitely be within the realm of ARPA funding. They would be okayed. And my biggest thing is to, as the treasurer, pay down as much debt as we can to alleviate the burden on the taxpayers. But, you know, there's lots of great ideas, so I'm sure that we can allocate certain percentages to different, you know, you don't want to call them departments, but lots of ideas, and we can, we can be creative with how we want to allocate the funds. And we do have a second round of funds coming next year. But we do have a lot of debt for a small village, so my concern is trying to alleviate, you know, the burden on the taxpayers. So that's my, that's my utmost, you know, wishlist, but there's lots of other good ideas out there, so.
Good thing, considering we had time, because I think maybe they all had to do a lot of research about paying down that, because there's a lot of rules. And we're gonna, yeah, if I can jump in, there are a lot of rules, and just so the board's aware. So last year, there had been what was called the interim fileable, and that was kind of out there for comments, and the comments came in. But they were flooded with comments about how difficult the program is to decipher, what this is allowable expense and what's not, and how you go about doing it. And all the records he did in, the recorded requirements. And all the records he did in the recorded requirements. The proposed, not the proposed, the files have just been published to the no lack of date. Uh, the Treasury Department has come out with some documents providing an overview of, of what will be allowed. Some of these rules have changed, you should be aware of that, or one particular, if you're aware. Um, but you're right, Bobby, the timing is. Projects have to be identified by a certain date, it's been now considered, right, by twenty-four? And the money spent by twenty-six. There is still an extended period of time, and maybe a judge would say we want to spend the money. But I think it is appropriate approach to say, well, let's fully consider this. And then, then we identify things, are they appropriate users or allowable? So the final rule is still being deciphered. I know the New York Conference of Mayor, Knighton, came out with some guidance or at least some memos explaining this. There should be more forthcoming based on the final rule, just public. So when I say public, we, we just literally within the last couple of days. The biggest change that was made thus far that we reviewed is you recall that. The, the law, or at least the rule, had provided a calculation to determine whether the municipalities had incurred any lost revenue that could be tied to impacts from the, from the, from the, from the pandemic. It was a very difficult calculation. Because of the number of comments received, the Treasury Department has now said. You, you can take what is basically the standard allowance in municipality. Think of it this way, when you do your taxes, you can itemize the deductions or you can take the standard deduction. What the Treasury Department has done with the ARPA is to say you can still do your calculation. Or you can take the standard allowance. The standard allowance is ten million dollars per municipality. Which means you can take certain monies. Use the standard allowance amount and move those monies into your general fund for general municipal service. And so there is some flexibility that's been provided. The second caveat I'll give you is the rule continues to say, and Denise, you should hear this. In general, you can't use the ARPA funds simply to pay down existing municipal debt. Nor can you put it into a reserve fund as a rate table. But what Knighton has said, and I would refer on this, is. If the debt was incurred after the effective date, which was March of twenty-one. And it was for a project which would otherwise be an allowable project through the ARPA program. Then you should be able to use the ARPA funds for that particular debt. If this is ultimately a proceeding the board wants to make and paying down debt, we'll put this drill down on that. But you got two things going on here, one, you've got allowable projects. And the other one, the general rule that says you can't use the money that paid down existing debt. The, the gray area in between is. Like this village has done, taking out debt post March twenty-one. To finance what would be an otherwise appropriate project to use ARPA funds is that debt allowance to pay. And I can tell you, Knighton, at least on the interim filing, we'll call that the appropriate expenditure, but we'll drill that down on that.
We haven't been there.
Correct. It could, it could. Well, if it's debt, it's because we, we approved the line. So it's, it's already an existing debt, uh, I think the village is banned in place for it, you know, at the long term profit. So I, I do think it's an existing debt place for a project that. Otherwise meets the criteria because of improving applicable expenditure.
I believe they ended. First, maybe in the year as well, it's probably.
And, and, and listen, now under, as we leave, the final rule is taking the standard allowance and putting it into general revenue funds. For general services, that includes environmental radiation. That's a part of what's going on, I, I go in though, not to be conjunction with the, the U K foxes. So there, there are ways to get there and there are certain categories under the final rule. But the first and foremost. To determine with the board and hopefully force to. That one's a general question.
Let me try to say this one.
Yeah. And, and to speak with something that Denise mentioned, uh, the office computers, they haven't been replaced since, uh, I have been mayor, so this is. Year five of being mayor, so that's at least year five that we've been on these computers, I don't remember. I don't remember if anyone knows when we got them last, but they are very old. Um, I was hoping that we could make it to the next fiscal year because last year we budgeted all the new server. Um, and some improvements within the infrastructure of, of the technology, I was hoping we could make it. Uh, until this fiscal year, um, to get those, uh, new computers in the next budget. Uh, but once we made the improvements in the server and they added some additional network security, that really bopped down the computers in the system. And I think, I know my own computer, which was actually a computer I got from, uh, my father, which donated to the village to be used for mayor work. Um, it, it's basically not working, so whenever I'm at the office, most of the time on, on the laptop. Uh, I don't know how your computers are, they're, they're. They're very slow, it, it's at the point where product, productivity is definitely being, uh. Uh, an issue, so I've, I've started to look at possibly finding some computers to replace all of them. Mark, how is yours? Is yours doing what it needs to be doing? Okay. Um, but I know we would definitely need a new computer for primarily for the three office staffs. Mine is not as pressing because I have this, but in terms of like what would have an immediate help would be getting new computers for them and then getting. Uh, our group to come in and, and set them up, move all the files over and so on and so forth.
The most.
Yeah. Yep. So we may.
It's me, you gotta.
Yeah. Yep. Are they working? Are they doing what you guys need them to do?
They're working, they're gathering.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, I've heard from the office staff because I'm in there, I haven't heard anything directly from you guys or from the court, but look, this is our infrastructure. We gotta support this, we gotta make sure that they can do what they need to do. Um, in my mind, if I went to a, you know, computer service and said, hey, we need to buy. Five, six, seven office computers, they're probably gonna be putting in stuff that's too high and costs like, you know, great each, which you don't need to do. We don't need monitors, we don't need devices, we just need new towers. We need to, new towers that have, you know, strong enough processors, enough RAM. I don't think anybody in particular, maybe the police would need. Uh, disk space if, you know, we got to the front where we had recording to need to do that, but I figured. In a situation like that, that's where we'd be more specialized than what we would go to a vendor who handles that sort of thing and can give us recommendations on. Well, if you're recording this many things from this many cameras, you're gonna need this much space, that sort of thing, but for just the office staff. And we could probably, you know, for five hundred dollars, get a exceedingly huge improvement, uh, for each of the towers, five hundred each. I'm just sort of starting to look and get to my ideas out there, what's, uh, what's up? No, we don't need to spend it.
No, 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 no.
The other expense would be making sure that we would budget for time for tech support to come in and do all the moves to make sure everything's good. In my mind, that would actually probably be a little bit bigger of an expense, but again, totally worth it. So, uh, if you have any, um, if you start to talk to officers and say, yeah, we could use some new computers, please pass that my way. And if you could reach out to Paulie and see how they're doing with that tech. Cause they are on our network, so that has been working as far as I can tell. Um, but, uh, if, if their computers are off shape, no, no, I'm sorry, that, that's all provided by the court. All their stuff, so that, so we don't have to worry about that side of it. Yeah. Uh, and I'm sorry, Bobby, we kinda went on into ARPA, but that's fine, any else?
No. Just saying, uh, let's say kind of that.
Yep, great, thank you. Yes. Alright, Deb?
Just, uh, we didn't even have the rest. Anything, um, emails around, um. Any ideas out there? On a day where we can buy our own, we. Remember the last time we talked about having any, um. Maybe, I can, we also, there's something we can send in there.
Yep. When we notice out to the public on, we're looking for suggestions, we'll make sure that the email address is set before we do that.
Okay, um, so. That way, you know, it's, you know, it's a phase of, uh, uh, something, but, um, they have many days. But thanks, like, you know, I was trying to do, you know, recently years, but, yeah, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think that might be less, less, maybe, too, because, you know, we all know the song, like, I'm not gonna be around, I was waiting. The people about, you know, it's, um, it's, you know, we, uh, we, uh, yeah, you know, it's, um.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we might be, we, we might not have as crowded. Whether it is. So, that's, that's important, and I think the, uh, the community is aware of that, that ARPA is on today. Please, and, and, uh. Um, so, um, you know, putting stuff down, don't worry, and there's much, that's not, I'm gonna talk, uh, I think. A lot of the most people are doing this kind of property, and, uh, you don't have to pay. The people who really wanted to follow us, they, uh. Yeah.
Alright. Great. Thank you, Deb. Bobby?
Uh, yeah, sure, me, I'll get that up on the screen on the shared so people at home. Uh, can look at this as well, give me just one second. Nope, I gotta do it this way. Alright, I think. I'm hoping people at home can see the, uh, oh, we can't see that, my goodness. Hoping people can see this at home, I'm gonna move this off the screen, uh, for a minute, I'm gonna zoom away. Alright. Hope too far. Who's across community dog park rules and regulations, all dogs must be licensed, vaccinated and healthy. Uh, dogs showing aggression towards people are other dogs are not allowed in the park, dogs must be at least four months old to enter the dog park. Dogs and heat are not allowed in the dog park, dogs must be leashed when entering or leaving the dog park. No person or persons can enter the dog park with more than two dogs. Handlers of the dogs must be sixteen years of age or older. Handlers are responsible for any injuries or damages caused by dog dogs under their control. Dogs must be in the view and under the control of the handler at all times, dogs must be removed from the dog park at the first sign of aggression. Handlers must pick up any and dispose of their dogs waste immediately. No, that's fine, that's fine. No digging is allowed, owners must fill in any holes dug by their dogs, excessive barking is not allowed. Uh, no food or smoking is allowed in or at the dog park. All incidents, injuries or inappropriate conduct by dogs. Or people should be reported to the village office ASAP. Uh, the village, whose it falls, may ban individual dogs or people from the dog park at any time for any reason. Dog owners must be respectful of other dogs and park users, owners may bring water in a bowl for their dogs to use. And enforcement of the above rules, under the immediate supervision of the town animal control officer. Okay, alright. Um, I think it would be wise to run this through Andy and run this through our officers. Do you guys like see anything you were thinking right after that? Oh, you know, there's something I would wanna change or adjust or anything you had concerns with? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but as, you know, people who are gonna be responding to this, I think it would be helpful for you guys to, to be good with everything. Okay. Andy, what are your thoughts? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, yeah.
One thing that I can say, you know, from the picture, uh, we're, 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 we have a few dogs there. Um, if someone was twelve, or twelve walkers, and have, you know, five dogs, they're obligated. Um, to be, you know, that's, you know, I feel like we might, um, we, with that.
Okay.
But I haven't seen anything of, you know. So, I don't even know if I can do that.
Alright. Andy? Sure, sure.
And the village, they ban individuals, dogs or people from the park at any time, for, for. Second thing, the, the property, and if they, uh, you deserve to like ban people for violations, they.
The blurb at the bottom?
Well, that's a classic fine. Yeah, that, that, we can, they have people or dogs. They can say that. Well, you know, no, 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 I'm not saying hybrid kids. Well, that, don't, you're correct, and ultimately you want them to be.
Insurable.
Absolutely.
Also, I think, um, that's more, that's more, they have a, um. Um, they, uh, they're tired, they're, they're, uh. So, we can think about, uh, the, uh.
Okay, Mark? I was thinking that too. Yep. Yeah. Sound good. Yeah. Okay. But no, this is, I mean, this is good because we're further in the discussion, so maybe. Uh, we can run this through all the channels that we can think of, pump for the final and resolution for the February meeting. Okay. Well, it is a small area, it's over there, so I could. No, it's not a huge area yet, but yes, I know what you're saying. I know a couple that have three.
Okay, no, that's true.
Yeah. I've seen a couple with three. Yeah, yeah. That's a good question.
If, my understanding is just not anticipating to be created to work for law, simply. Dog park rules or anything, but we, by the, that's a fair point, though, we have to look at how that kind of. We call it animal control.
Yeah.
Dog tails with the dog law.
Yeah. It may also be good to see, you know, if, if we like what Saratoga does, theirs, maybe we can see if they have a, a law that. Was the inspiration to these rules, which gave the officers the necessary means to enforce things, I think. Very good point, thank you.
We mentioned already, the, 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 uh, so, maybe, when that's, uh.
That's the idea, yes.
Oh, that. Oh, that reminds me. I'm sorry. We are actually in the process of using, um, John, uh, who is the town attorney, but he's also the specialist, the specialist for law regarding dogs and like the greater capital region and beyond. He has taken a first crack at looking at our, our, our dog laws. So we're kind of in the initial process of we need to review these and I, I've tried, been trying to set up a, a time to meet with him uh, and with our, our dog board and so we can talk through things, establish things. So maybe this gets built into that. Oh, that's, I'm really glad you guys came up with that and connected that. Thank you. A good question. Yeah. 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 That's half from not Saratoga, half of them. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Awesome. Uh, anything else? All right, let's head on to old business. Uh, the first thing that we have been regularly tabling, but now we have a meeting set up for about a week and a half. Uh, in about a week and a half to make our discussions and start talking about what our changes are gonna be um, regarding the transfer station. So even though this is in the whole business, I'd like a motion to table this until February 8th. Motion from Bobby. Do I have a second? All right. Any further discussion or questions on this? All right, uh, motion is to table. All in favor? Opposed or extensions? All right, carries. And we just discussed dog park rules and regulations. I don't think we need to table this right now because we're just gonna keep working on the Sunday. Is that correct? So. All right. All right, in that case, oh, there's the transfer station appearing on the screen randomly. Okay. Uh, new business discussion regarding ARPA funds. I feel like we've discussed this. Is there anything else you guys wanna bring up about this? All right. Um, yes, Denise.
We wanna set a time for, you know, like a workshop on this. Um, is there any kind of interest to set any kind of meeting to start going over this? I mean, there's no rush, but to start hashing out ideas or?
Well, if we advertise now that the February meeting would open with the workshop, is that, do we feel comfortable moving that fast? I mean, it does certainly motivate us. Just for ARPA? Andy, what's the noticing requirements for a workshop like this? So we could, if we wanted to at the regular February meeting, notice for a week from now, we would not, we're gonna have a workshop, we're gonna hear from people. If we wanted to do that approach.
If you're gonna do something like that. Again, there's a suggestion that probably more than we know. There's still time for you to get into some ideas, you know? And it's marked with a better timing, right? That's in order for people to know that it should be a special, more staff before your regular meeting on the second day.
I think if we know it when they come in or when we, you know, put out the information here, things we're thinking of. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. I think we just need to keep up communication on that. And there's no shame in comparing notes, but it's still gonna be up to you guys to decide, you know, how many of the computers for the village you're gonna buy for us, but you know, up to us, you know? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
This, I think, is one, if you're entering the park, it's also struggling, wanting to distance a lot of the time, and if you can see that. I don't actually know, I think, once the calculations determine whether a dentist completed or as a result, these tests, and then get hard. They underline all of this, you're familiar with the kids. There's no pretty rule for these projects, but you have to incite the people, get as much guidance as you can, once you spend the money. There's, and I didn't say that this is very good, Denise, but there is, because anybody wants record keeping reporting requirements, reduce the files. And then the German department can do a subtle part of it. And if there are things, despite your record keeping and justification, reduce the files, if they determine that it's an inappropriate use, you got to reverse it. And this is now, we're looking at, this is significant online. So moving carefully, um, a lot of thoughts, it's, this is in terms of.
Mark? Yeah, Denise, please.
I will actually definitely be coming in the next meeting because everything is garbled on my end. I know there's a lot of input from the trustees that I can tell is really good. Um, so if, if, you know, if they wanna even come into the office and start a conversation, you know, that and that method or have the workshop. It's not anything that does need to be done, you know, imminently, but it would be a good budgeting tool to know what we're looking at for the next year or two, to know what route we might wanna be traveling. So it's just a thought. It doesn't need to happen soon, but I mean, everybody's ideas are good. And if they could all compile them and then the board make their decision, we would have a better idea of where we're gonna be heading down the road. That's all.
Yeah, and just to reiterate that, um, we have, it's so weird because the village's fiscal year works similarly than so many of the others, but we actually have the advantage of being able to have these discussions now in the same time that we're getting the next budget ready. And we don't want to introduce those at the April meeting.
Yes.
So this, this is the right time to start making discussions and making plans. So ideally, if we can maybe have our, our targets and our site probably around February, maybe make some official decisions in March. That helps the budget. If, if, yeah. All right. Yeah. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
All right, um. We don't need to, uh, we just one minute to get the next screen up and ready for us. I don't, do we, we don't need to table anything on that, right? Great. Uh, so I'm gonna bring up the copy machine charts. Uh, I'm gonna move the zoom screen over back to here. And I will zoom in on this. Um, apologies on not getting this out to the trustees sooner. Um, this was something that we've been working on a lot. The, uh, the office has been working a lot on this. Um, and we had some questions and Andy was super helpful today on our procurement policy. We have two specific quotes that we're bringing. We've received more, but there's really two that we're focused on for copy machines. Both of them are state contracts. Um, and the two machines, and I will show you the, the direct quotes, but this is just a quick overview. Uh, the Sharp Copy Machine, and both of them have two paper trays and, and the cabinet. Uh, and we're estimating, you know, twelve hundred copies a month. I totally misspelled that. Sorry. Uh, each of them will have the additional finisher, and the finisher is important because the finisher will do automatic stapling and automatic folding, which especially when it comes to, you know, getting letters out of the mail, especially large ones, watermelons, it's gonna be incredible. Um, the Sharp machine here has a base cost of thirty-seven ninety-two, the external finisher uh, of thirteen eighty-two, and the annual service cost of one eighty. Um, brings it to fifty-three, fifty-four, and the annual service cost, it says it'll be annually, we'll pay it now and we'll have to budget for that. Denise, you can't see this on your screen, can you? I don't think I'm sharing this. Just one second. All right, there.
No, I can't see it. Oh, there, I can now.
All right, my apologies. Uh, so this is the Sharp machine, the second machine that we're looking at. Sorry about, oh, that's the wrong button. Thanks. Oh, all these are different. Okay. Is the Rico, uh, copy machine, sorry. Um, this is through repeat business. This was one of the people, we've worked with them regularly. This was one that we almost went with the mail, but we went with a different one. Um, the Rico IM twenty-five hundred, uh, similar, does similar, same things that we needed to do. Uh, the base cost is actually a little bit lower, twenty-eight, seven, uh, the external finisher is fourteen, fourteen. Annual service cost is a little bit higher, but the total cost for the first year would be forty-four ninety-seven, uh, compared to the fifty-three, fifty-four. And the preference of the village office staff is the Rico. Um, I agree, not only just because we have a Rico, but I've actually used a similar machine at the school because over the past like six years, they've been through several different Ricos uh, with upgrades. And I know this one, and it's very similar in layout to the one we have, but it also has a lot of up-to-date features and T S R D gears. Um, the actual specific bits, um, that we have are right here. Hate the fact that it wants me to zoom that way. Can we tuck this down, Bob? There, there were, well, there was one or two other vendors that you guys checked out, but it just wasn't hitting what we needed to do. So that's why we're not bringing those to you, but you know, we had two others we would line up to get. Uh, annual service costs. We'll go back to that. And again, if, you know, they come out, general things are covered, but if there's like a need a part or something else, that would obviously be another expense. I wouldn't go that far. Yeah. Yeah. Um, so those, do you guys have any other questions or one more detail on any of these? We, we talked about, or we, we looked into the possibility of leasing versus purchasing. It sounded like everyone in the office agreed purchasing was the better way to go. It's better long-term because ideally we'll be saving money and just going to lease. Um, but no, no, that's just, that's just estimated. Yeah. Nope, it's, we purchased it, it's ours. Many copies will be lost. Yep. Yep. Denise, anything you wanna add?
Uh, no, no, I think you've done, those are the costs, and we've been very happy with Repeat. They've been in-house for a bit. Um, but we wanted to see what the other competitors have to, had to, um, offer, and we liked the Rico we've had. Up until now, it's been good, but it's, it's certainly served its purpose over the last, I can't even tell you how many years. So.
Yeah.
I like the Rico.
So, uh, if, if the board is okay with it, we would look for a motion, uh, to purchase the Rico IM twenty-five hundred for repeat business as per the state contracts. All right. Thank you, Bobby. And Bobby, any further discussion? Yeah, comparison to. Uh, all right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Opposed or extensions? We have three happy office ladies. Thank you.
Yes, you do.
And a happy Mark too, I'm sure. All right. All right, um, so we, I talked about this earlier. The Office of Temper and Disability Assistance, Low Income Household Water Assistance. All right, um, so we, I talked about this earlier, the Office of Temperance Disability Assistance, the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. Let me get that up, um. I think, oh, that's a little bit zoomed out. That's a little bit offside. Nope, I don't think this is the right one. Is it? No, this is to be an outfit. Um, it'd be ahead out here just one too. So Andy, do you want to just speak briefly? I know you looked into this and, or Marie, either one. I know you guys looked into this.
In order for the state to make a payment, there is the village would be needing a vendor to, you're supplying a mortgage. And so the state does require that the vendor execute a tender agreement. And because this is a project, it does obviously, it does obviously do certain things under the vendor. Obviously, the big thing is you're going to be having to make direct statements. Uh, there is a confidentiality provision, that's the information that you see from the state concerning the applicants to the program, so the agent, that just goes up to the fire, and it's not on the vendor's name. Obviously, you're not going to be needing anything differently, because the state assistance, you're not going to discriminate uh, in getting payments correctly from the state's government office. And this needs to be accounted for, uh, you'll maintain some records on this. This is a program, it's one of the weather management customers, and I'm going to buy them, and it's, and, and we'll, we kept track through the state, it confirms. And so.
So we're basically looking for a motion to approve, I think it would be Marie, to, uh. And we'll be a vendor type, uh. So I'm just looking for that motion. All right, Bobby and Bobby, further discussion? All there, Rob, I'm saying, great, let's have this. Any opposed or sanctions? All right, Caris, thank you. Thank you, Andy. Uh, who's it? River Greenway North Trailhead Ranch. This was a thing I brought up by accident uh, earlier. You get that back up here. So they have, uh, we put it out for bid originally. Um, no bids came back or no bid on it, so we're going to try it again with a simpler, uh, version. Uh, the timeline, as I mentioned before, would be, um, to get it back in on February first, twenty twenty-two. Have the bid opening, give some time to review documents, and get their official recommendations forward with the possibility of us moving on in the February. Anything else you guys want to add to this? Okay. All right, so this is a pretty simple one. We're just looking for motion to advertise for bids, uh, with revised bid package. Thank you, guys. Further discussion? Uh, all in favor? Oppose or extensions? All right, thank you, Motion Caris. Um, Spectrum Internet Installation, I gave you the quick run-through before. I'm just looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Spectrum Internet, uh, for internet phone and a static IP address to be installed at thirteen, let's break. Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Bobby. Uh, any further discussions? All in favor? Oppose or extensions? Caris, you now have two happy water operators. And we have a resolution delegating to the village treasurer the power to authorize the sale and issuance of not to exceed one hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars revenue anticipation notes in anticipation of receipt of revenue from water bills. Uh, while I get that up there, Denise, do you want to say anything specific or Andy about this?
Hello, hello, hi, um, just because, um, we didn't get to re-levee the water outside of the water inside bills this year. And of course, this is always our normal cash crunch period of the year. Uh, in anticipation of the county making us whole in two thousand twenty-three. Actually, now we are able to borrow money to help our cash flow and then just pay it back when we receive the money from Russell County. We will be able to, the governor didn't allow us to re-levee the water uh, bills from this past year in June. Where next year we can. So we will be able to, to do this year and the last year. So we can recoup those funds and be recouped in March of twenty-three and thereby helping our cash flow now.
Did you hear that, Denise?
I can't. What was the question?
One more time, Kevin. The, can, can, um, that state program that we talked about before, can they use those funds to pay for that?
I can't really hear the discussion, but I'm, I'm assuming that by that program, that anyone that could apply and be accepted, their bill would be resolved before any kind of re-levee. This would just be at the final end of anything that was not paid. Like we would normally do, would be re-leveeed into the, um, the June property taxes of the village.
Okay, uh, so we have up here a resolution uh, delegating the village treasurer. I've read that before, that very long title. Uh, not to exceed one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollar revenue, uh, revenue anticipation notes. So be resolved by the Board of Trustees, the Village of Falls, Rents, County, New York as follows. Um, section one, the power to authorize the sale and issuance of not to exceed one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars revenue anticipation notes of the Village of Falls, Rents, County, New York, including renewals thereof in anticipation of the receipt of revenues from water bills is hereby delegated to the treasurer, chief fiscal officer. Such notes shall be of such terms, form, and contents, and shall be sold in such manner as may be determined by said treasurer pursuant to the provisions of local finance law and section two of the resolution shall take effect immediately. So I'm looking for someone to introduce the resolution. All right, I need a second. All right, thank you, Bobby. Do you have any further questions, discussions?
And just to clarify, that would be for what we would normally have done this past June, but we couldn't because of the pandemic. It would be any unpaid water bills. We did, we did re-levee those, the sewer and the solid waste. We were not able to do the water. So it would be any unpaid water bills that were from the previous year, which would be, uh, I think it's gonna be, you know, I'm trying to go back. It would be anything from the past fiscal year that would normally be, uh, re-leveeed, that couldn't be re-leveeed this past June. So it would normally be, already have been done, but because of the pandemic, it was not able to be done. So it's not really, you know, anything that would be out of the normal. We would already be receiving this, but because of the situation, we're not this year. So we'll just pay it back when we get the money back from the county.
All right.
From what I can hear, that sounds totally accurate. Yes.
All right, any further questions? Roll call both, please. Um, yes. Outstanding. All right, thank you. Uh, let me switch the share. Bear with me here. Okay. And trustees, is there anything else you want to bring up, uh, for business? Okay, uh, if that is the case, let me get this up here as normal. I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session to receive advice from council and to discuss the personnel matter with no business to be conducted at the conclusion of executive session. Thank you. Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Closer sessions? Okay, we are now adjourned to executive session at seven forty-six PM. Uh, there will be no business afterwards, so I will close down the Zoom. I will stop recording. Thank you to all who joined us and put up with the microphone. That's been good. Thank you all. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.